I'd like to call this meeting to order, the regular meeting of the school district of the city of Dearborn for Monday, November 12th. It is 7:09. First item, please.
Roll call, Hussein Barry here. Fadwa Hamud.
Here.
Mary Lane.
Here.
Celia Nasser.
Here.
Mary Petchikoff.
Here.
James Thorpe.
Not here.
James Thorpe's not here. President Mead.
Present. Next item, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. Mr. Adnan Mughni, principal of Henry Ford Elementary School, introduce students who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I have three great kids from Henry Ford Elementary School. I have Sabine, Sabine Bazea, I have Kamora Tate, and also Ali Fadallah. Sabine is fifth grade, Kamora second grade, and Ali Fadallah first grade. They will lead us in the recitation of the pledge.
Welcome.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
They're gonna start their school pledge.
You got more?
Go for it.
As a kid, I guess, go ahead.
Yay. Nice job. Thank you. Next item, please.
Superintendent's update. First items, agenda items?
So I'd first like to, we had a couple tragedies over the last couple of weeks. If we can have a moment of silence, we've had two staff members, a teacher, Kim Pantaleo, and a custodian, Raymond Costley, who passed away. And, you know, so our thoughts and prayers go out to them and our families and all the people at the schools and all the people involved at those communities. If we could just take a moment of silence, please. Appreciate that. So for agenda items, I have a couple of things that I would like to discuss. First thing is, as usual, retirements. We have three this month. Wanna congratulate Janet Jacobs, 31-plus years of service, Janet Partika, over 26 years of service, and Linda Tynan, over 14 years of service. If we could show our appreciation, then we thank them and we appreciate their service. So another agenda item that I have is, you know that we've been working on the infrastructure committee for quite a amount of time now, going back several years, a couple of years now, when we started taking on the capacity issue. So on the agenda tonight, I just wanted to point out to everyone, is an action item for the board to support us moving forward with the recommendations from the infrastructure committee that were presented on the 29th. Now, that doesn't mean it's a final decision on it, because obviously you couldn't, there's a lot more to go, but at least the board would give us direction to start planning on that area, because things are, you know, under a timeline, and we need to get moving if we are gonna go for a potential bond with a zero-mill increase in November of 2019. So I just wanted to point that out publicly on my commentary. And that's it for agenda items.
Non-agenda items?
So, um, oh, he's helping out. So today, I was at Lori. It is Veterans Day. I was actually in Washington last week, as I know later in the agenda, we have our blue-ribbon recognition. I was able to visit the Vietnam Veterans Memorial and the World War II Memorial. And again, you know, Memorial Day is about those who paid the ultimate sacrifice, but this is Veterans Day, and today we are, you know, giving honor to those who served their country. And so, you know, the veterans of our military service really have put their lives on the line to protect the freedoms that we enjoy. They have just dedicated their lives to the country and deserve to be recognized for their commitment. We need to remember their achievements, their courage, and their dedication, and say thank you for their sacrifices. So. My family is here, and I know my mother, I just wanna mention, my grandfather is a veteran for the U.S. Navy, my late grandfather, so I just wanted to mention this, my mother's here tonight, so. And he was proud that he served his country. Next, I'm gonna call up, I have Tim Krajinski and Dr. Don Ball are gonna come up and talk about hydration and the water testing. We've been discussing this, and we put a press release out publicly on this issue.
Good evening, trustees.
Good evening.
As Dr. Malako indicated, we've been working over the last few months with booster clubs and PTA, parent-teacher organizations, to install some of these bottle-filling stations to sort of part of the Healthy Dearborn Initiative. The kids are really into it and help them keep hydrated, so we've come up with a district standard for bottle-filling stations, those who go out to bid shortly, and we intend to start putting those in over the holidays.
I get to talk about water testing in about 30 seconds, so, real briefly, we're going to start testing the elementary school drinking fountains on Saturday. We do the testing on Saturdays because we have to have a six-hour timeframe where the water isn't being used at all. We take two samples from each source. One is the first straw where we run the, we turn the water on, take a sample, turn it off, then let it run 30 seconds and take a second sample. We expect to do all the elementary school drinking fountains over the next five weeks, so we'll have the results back, I hope, in time for January.
What about middle school and high school?
The target population for lead poisoning is the elementary school level.
Okay.
All right. We'll do the high schools and middle schools next year, depending on funding.
Okay. And this is our second cycle, so we've already started this testing several years, we've been doing it for years, but we accelerated it in 2016, a few, you know, when the whole Flint.
After the flood.
And so this is our proactive approach to increase the amount of testing that we wanna do so that, and we've been very public about how we've been doing that.
Yes.
I know with all the negative comments, negative news about water in Flint and other cities, I just wanna make sure the public knows that we have no issues here. We're being proactive about this. Just wanna put that out there. I know I spoke about this before, I just wanna make sure. Thank you.
Trustee Lane?
Since trustee Barry's making a comment, I think I will too. Dr. Malako is correct, we've been doing this for a number of years, when the catastrophe happened in Flint, and it really was a catastrophe, that a generation of children was poisoned because of supposed efficiency or financial questions. It just made us really sad, and everybody was shocked, in a state that has the world's greatest water resources. We're surrounded by water. Waters underneath us were never more than two miles from surface water in Michigan, and yet this happened in our state. And we did start proactively testing, but it's a reminder to all of us that we can't take this resource, which most of the rest of the world never takes for granted. Clean water is the first and most critical element for life, so we should never take it for granted. And in my own opinion, we should never let a corporation come in and pay $200 and take off with our water resources. There are water resources for everyone in the state and for the entire, really for the globe. We need to preserve this, so. The fires in California have shown us how precious water is, and we have an obligation as guardians of this water to guard it and steward it carefully. Thank you.
So, thank you for your work.
If I could just mention, too, I appreciate all the comments. So if we do ever do find an elevated level, we're right on it immediately, because of our proactive approach. And the hydration machines are very helpful, too. I first saw them in hockey arenas, and they're also environmental-friendly because of the bottles, so we're gonna be looking at a project, and we put this in the press release so that we would eliminate the plastic and you can have refillable bottles. We've gotten a lot from the Beaumont Healthy Dearborn, so it's a real positive all around. And I chose to use my, I have a special projects discretionary budget, I'm funding those hydration machines out of that budget.
Good. Wonderful. Next.
I still got a few more, sorry. So this PESG substitution, I, first of all, wanna commend our team. They've done, you know, they did an outstanding job when we just found out about this issue, like 5 o'clock, the night before PSG went down. I know Dr. Leep is here from the county, and I called him, and Wayne County RISA is always very supportive, but our team really came together, it really showed the community how we come together in time of crisis, and I'm just proud of everyone. Some of my HR experience was here, and we were able to, I was able to process people as well. And having said that, I wanna let everyone know that we've worked out a system, it went public, and there were some legal issues, and our attorney here is Tim Courier, working with Tom Wall and Mason, that we had to make sure that our employees would get paid, so we did not wanna pay the PESG company, who we had been with for 13 years, so instead we held the money, and now we're paying the outstanding three weeks directly to our employees. That's gonna, the communications went out, that will happen on the 16th. Again, we were working to get our employees paid, the contract workers immediately, and so despite what they may be saying when they contact them, that's not accurate, this is not the district's fault, this, you know, they're under breach of contract for, you know, they need to give us a 90-day notice. Having said that, we dealt with the situation. We're also gonna evaluate moving forward, whether we wanna look at another group, like what Wayne County RISA has with Ed Ustaf or other potential groups. So we're evaluating that, but we're in good shape right now, because we have hired our own subs to be able to deal with the situation. And really, everybody at ASC here did come together, HR, Ruth Bankhead, Mason, the whole group, and people came in early, and were just very dedicated to help our potential crisis, also with the buildings, very calm, and I kinda have mentioned that before, so I think there may have been a couple.
Perhaps for our audience, you could define what PESG is.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. You know, I don't even, professional educational substitute support.
What's their business?
They supply, they're a contractor that supplies substitutes for the district, and it switched, I think we started with them in maybe like 2005, somewhere around there. And part of it was cost savings, part of it was just recruitment, and most districts have gone with one of these contractors.
And they discontinued their services.
They discontinued, and they didn't really give us any notification, other than we found out through the employees the night before at 5 o'clock, that they were, they were going out of business the next day.
So you had to completely reorganize quickly in order to get the substitute teachers in the classroom?
Correct. So we basically, we processed 150 the very next morning and got them employed.
Trustee Hamud?
Yeah.
The PESG stands for Professional Educational Services Group, but in addition, you were close, in addition to all the people that Dr. Malako thanked, I really, really wanna give a shout-out to our substitutes. They were here at 7:00 a.m. They were so calm, so supportive, and so concerned about getting to their students, and those are our substitutes. And so, at a time of a sub-s shortage, in addition to all of our staff putting, getting all hands on deck, it was a really calm, fairly pleasant morning, considering that we were under this pressure. But really, the substitutes, they really, their attitude and their, you know, they got here 7:00 a.m., and they were just anxious to get to their buildings. I need to get to my students, so thank you to them.
Yeah, nice to know that.
The parents in the PTA helped out, too, by going to the buildings and offering support to volunteer that morning.
Trustee Hamud?
And I just wanted to comment, when I first, I remember I saw Dr. Malako when we had first learned of the news, and I thought, what a crisis, what are we going to do the next day? And talk about teamwork, whether it's the PTA, the parents, the substitute teachers, to process 150 applications the next day, where I think most of us had people calling, like, do you, do you guys need a sub? Do you need me to come in? And it was the community coming together for our schools, for our district. Glenn, I applaud you, I applaud your administration, your staff. I know Mason, who just came up, was actually off that week, and she was working that night. I mean, this was truly, what a great example of how a community works to uplift a school, so thank you to every single one of you and to the community as a whole. That was, watching that, I couldn't believe how calm the situation was. I saw pictures even on social media where this place was filled with substitute teachers, 7:00 in the morning, ready to work, you know, with a couple hours' notice. I mean, I am so beyond proud, yeah.
Proud of the staff, proud of your work, thank you.
So I still have a few more things. So first of all, I want to congratulate everyone that ran for office in the elections, and I have written cards that will be sent out to all those that ran for school board, just thanking them for getting involved. Then I especially wanna thank those, everyone who participated, but then those, trustee Lane, trustee Thorpe, and Roxanne McDonald, who ran election seats, trustee Lane for two years, and two six-year seats for Roxanne McDonald, and Jim Thorpe, who's not here right now, so.
I think Roxanne McDonald.
Yes, Roxanne's in the audience.
Oh, yes, she's here, so congratulations. Maybe we can show our appreciation for everyone that ran for election. Couple other things to go with that, we wanna thank Celia, who will be leaving the board, but wanna thank her for her service and her dedication. We will have a reception for her at 6:15 before the December PTA 12 board meeting, so thank you, Celia, it's been great working with you. And, oh, yeah, let's give her a big round of applause, yes. Next, I wanna call up our attorney, Tim Courier, to explain, we have kind of a complicated situation with the terms, trustee Lane going from the six-year to the two-year, so he is here to explain the legal process that we'll be going through.
It's actually fairly simple. Ms. Lane did not run for her own seat, which is a six-year term, she chose to run for Ms. Nasser's remaining seat, which she will take office upon the occurrence of a couple items. First of all, the election has to be certified. Once it's certified, they have five days from the elections group to give her notice that she has been elected to take office. She, that's five business days. Then she has 10 business days after that, to go in, to submit her resignation for her current post, and also sign an acceptance to take the rest of Ms. Nasser's term, and she'll start immediately upon doing that. The other trustees will start on January 1. That's when their terms will begin. So that's the process we should go through at this point. So when you see some of these changes occur, I did leave you a booklet from MASB as to how you do appointments. Now, under your policy, if somebody applies for interest, expresses interest, and applies to fill out the last few weeks of this term, you're gonna have to take the, take those and look at their qualification, maybe even have to interview them. We won't know that until we see if that happens, and we don't know of this because of the timing yet. It may be that the 30 days from which you have to appoint, once the vacancy occurs, will not have to be acted upon, because it will fall into January of 2019, and other people will all be taking their terms by then. Mr. Mastona and I put together, actually David put together a calendar as to how this would possibly look, at the, at the long end and the short end, so if you have any questions, the two of us will try to answer your questions.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
So if there was an appointment process, and the board was to appoint within 30 days, would the appointee, that appointed board member, even have time to come to, you know, would they have that time to serve even at one board meeting, with that time limit?
I don't think, I think all they have is a college meeting, possibly, that would be fall in that area.
Possibly, a college meeting.
Yeah. But unlikely because of the timeline, right?
Unlikely.
It may just fall over the Christmas holiday break.
Yes.
Trustee Petlicoff?
But we are required to go through the appointment process.
Correct.
If, if that 30-day range is viable, so to speak, we do have to go through, I just wanted to make sure.
That's according to policy. We have a policy that we do have to post.
Yeah.
And the 30 days is calendar days, not business days, and that starts upon, immediately upon Ms. Lane taking office and Ms. Nasser's remaining term. That's when that would start.
So as soon as trustee Lane signs off on that certified?
Correct. Then the 30 days starts.
That, that starts the clock.
Right.
Okay.
But most likely, that would occur with less than 30 days until January 1st.
Right.
Therefore, there really, that.
Wouldn't be a vacancy.
Really wouldn't be a vacancy.
The information we have at this time is that the election's gonna be certified on November 20th. That's their target date. That'll start the first five business days, when they have to give notice to Ms. Lane.
And then she has another 10 days.
Another 10 business days after that. And since we're talking about business days, Thanksgiving falls on there, too, so it gets extended.
Stretches that out.
Stretches that out, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, trustee Lane.
Yes.
Well, there is the election for the trustee positions, and there was also the election for the college millage as well.
Yeah, I was gonna call, I already arranged that to call up president, actually, right now, President Cavalehuna.
Okay, all right, good. Well, I would like to say thank you to everyone who honored me with their vote. I'm very humbled, and will endeavor to serve the best possible that I can for the city of Dearborn, so, thank you.
Glad to have you aboard.
And I'd like to thank also all the people who did run, because that's what our democracy is about. And the students that put together forums were unbelievable, the PTA, the League of Women Voters. I think we all participated in a really great exercise of our democratic rights just recently, and we had a great turnout, so I'm really, really grateful for it.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, so President Cavalehuna, if you could come up, I believe you're here.
Cavaluna.
Cavaluna, sorry.
It's all right. I made that mistake lots.
Oh, okay.
Cavaluna.
Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, Dr. Malako, trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all. Dr. Malako's right, it has been a momentous time for the college. We have a new president, we have a millage that was put to the voters just last week, and of course, potential, and now we know, new members to the board. Being a new member of the community, I was interested in seeing how the community would react to that type of public question, and I was happy to see what a wonderful display of our American system of democracy we had here in Dearborn. I, too, share the sentiments that a few have said here this afternoon already, that it bears repeating, that someone who has the interest in our public schools, and frankly, our public community college, to put their name on a ballot and ask their fellow citizens to say yes to their leadership abilities, just, just the opportunity to have them to say that is important, it's difficult, it's frankly, nothing I've ever had the opportunity or courage to do. So for all those that are in our community that did that, they have my respect, and everyone at the colleges' respect. I also need to compliment the people who are effective in doing that. Of course, trustee Lane, congratulations on your election. Trustee Thorpe, I believe he's in a warmer climate today, but I still, I still can compliment him, and I did see your new colleague, at least soon-to-be-new colleague, soon-to-be trustee McDonald in the audience today, and all of them have the colleges' respect and appreciation for their courage to ask the public to endorse their public service. And then, of course, 5% of our operating budget was before the citizens of this city, and it was a tough election. Times are in this country where we're asking whether we're getting public service for our public dollars. And the Associate, the American Federation of Teachers at my college did an advocacy campaign, trying to explain the value that we provide to our citizens. My staff provided the information, and I, I was interested in to see what the community would think about whether that was a valuable public investment. I can tell you that I voted for the first time in Dearborn, and I voted yes on the millage. And I'm thankful that 70% of the others who voted, voted yes. It's humbling, it's exciting. I hope you all had an opportunity to see my public statement of gratitude to my colleagues at the college that volunteered you all for thinking and talking about this event, but most importantly, those that went to the polls. I'll end with what I said, and that was, it is not, it is not ordinary, our system of democracy, where we peacefully go to the polls, debate what the right public policies are, ask for votes, deliver votes, and then we peacefully accept the results. And Dearborn does it with the greatest diversity of backgrounds and educations and religions, and as a new member of the community, I'm very proud, and frankly, and candidly, I'm very excited about the result. So thank you all for giving me the opportunity to say that, thank you for allowing me to serve you all on the board, and I look forward to the years with the new board, and I thank you, trustee Nasser, for your time on the board. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Dr. Malako.
Thank you. It's absolutely an exhilarer, exhilar, yeah, a very high feeling, a very positive feeling that the community voted 70% in favor of the millage for the college. It shows that the people in the community really do support our community college, and they really do have expectations for our college, and our college will meet those expectations. So thank you for supporting the college.
Thank you. So congratulations, and I have a couple more items. I was at an event, and some of us were, I think, Mary, you were there, and Hussein, trustee Net, trustee Petlicoff, and trustee Barry, and trustee Thorpe, and many others at the Salina event. I spent 12 years at Salina, and it was just an awesome night for the 100-year anniversary. People were there from many different eras, and trustee Barry introduced me, and it was just a real positive, all the speakers, it was an hour and 45-minute program.
But you took over the three minutes.
Yeah, I know, I know, he tried to yank me, not trustee Barry, but, Tony, yeah, and he was joking with me, but he actually afterwards said that he could see the passion, because we all feel.
You think he was joking with you?
That's what he said at the exchange meeting after, but I don't know. Anyway, even though we were from different eras, whether we were staff, students, you felt connected, you felt the energy in the room, and you just couldn't move through the building, and it was, we had politicians there, outstanding. Trustees, I was able to get for you a commemorative pin that you all received, and so I just wanted to congratulate Salina on 100-year, and a great event.
Thank you.
And the last thing, Fortson Football. They had a great season, I know, with, congratulations to all our teams, all our competitors, and all the sports, but I know Fortson, you know, they had a great year, a great run, beating Cass Tech in the playoffs, the district championship, and they had a tough match last week on Friday against Chippewa Valley, so thank, congratulations to all of our competitors across the district, but a special to the Fortson Football team.
Thank you. Well, we do have one more item under the superintendent's update, and I'd like to ask Mr. Chris Weigent, Executive Director of Michigan Association of School Administrators, to approach us and tell us something.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening to the Dearborn Board of Education. Hi, Glenn.
Hi, Chris.
Hello to all the Dearborn staff, and good evening to all the Dearborn community. I apologize, but I think this is the way it works out, so I'm talking to you as well.
They can see you on the.
All right. My name is Chris Weigent, as mentioned, and I am the Executive Director of the State Superintendents Association. You might be saying, I remember that guy from somewhere. I was the superintendent at Wayne RISA from 2007 through 2015. I was also back here in 2014 to give the state's Superintendent of the Year award to then-superintendent Brian Wiston. So if you say, hey, I kinda remember him, I've been around. I do have some guests I'd like to introduce real quick tonight. You may know Dr. Randy Leafer from Wayne County RISA.
Hi, Doc.
My significant other, Wendy Zadeb. More importantly, she's the Executive Director of the Principals Association, so Wendy's here. And then two more special guests, Beth Wiston is in the back, Beth? And her daughter Kristen.
Oh, that's great.
So I told Glenn I was here to audit his behavior during the school board meeting, and so far, he's effective, a couple points away from highly effective. You know the PESG stuff, and you're there. But I'm also here to do something that's gonna be very, very fun. One of the best things that I get to do is to go around the state and honor annually those who are named the state superintendent of the year. How do we come about with this award? Well, first of all, superintendents have to be nominated, and they're nominated by their communities, their boards, staff members, whoever it might be. All of those names then go into a pool, and we contact each and every one of those candidates, and they complete a pretty exhaustive packet that kinda speaks to what they're about, their accomplishments, all those types of things. We then have a statewide committee, made up of PTA members, made up of superintendents, principals. We then have a statewide committee made up of PTA members, made up of superintendents, principals, board members, teacher of the year, state school board members. So it's not just me sitting down and picking someone out. It's a committee from the entire state. At that point then, they bring forward a candidate and we work out the arrangements with some very forgiving staff and others to present this award. So I would like to give you some comments and some brief snapshots about tonight's award winner, Glenn. Here are just some real quick things. And you're gonna shake your heads and go, yep, that sounds familiar. Always putting students first. Cares deeply about their success. Has paid off in many, many areas, including an increase in graduation rates. Glenn's vision and careful strategic planning are leading to greater success for students. His leadership in the district's social media presence is impressive. And I will tell you, as an outsider at this point, it is impressive. I feel like I live right next to the Dearborn School District. I've seen the sign ten thousand times. I'm waiting for it to pop up real quick. But it is very impressive. And here it comes. There it is. I will editorialize for a second. There have been a couple of bumps in the road for Glenn and the district over the last year or so. And what I learned is when you have a great relationship and you're very open with your community and they're used to seeing you post, not just when it's an emergency, that builds a lot of credibility. And in watching Glenn and the district go through those challenges, I think that really paid off. So it's not just to communicate to be glitzy, but there is a real reason for it and I think it's really paid off for this district. Just a couple of other things. And here's from some of the nominations. Glenn has never lost focus of what matters most in our profession and that's students. Dr. Maleko serves the Dearborn Public School District with integrity and promotes high standards. All of those things that I've talked about are true of Glenn and I know that firsthand because he's a colleague and he's also a friend. So before I formally present the award, I would like to invite Randy, Dr. Leopf, to just come up and say a few words as the Wayne County RISA Superintendent. Randy?
Good evening.
Good evening.
President Mead and members of the Board of Education, I am thrilled to be here tonight, to be part of the presentation. And we are so proud to say that the Superintendent of the Year Award is coming back to Wayne County and it's coming back to Dearborn. What a great, great accomplishment. Our thirty-three superintendents are going to be throwing a party tomorrow in all of their districts when they get the news. And my guess is what Glenn's going to say tonight is, you know, there are a lot of great superintendents out there and there are so many people that are deserving of this. And so let me just say what those thirty-three superintendents would say about Glenn. And that is first and foremost, I mean, he runs a phenomenal organization. Dearborn has a high, high reputation in regards to its school district, how it's run and what it does for kids. But they'd also say on top of being a phenomenal administrator, Glenn's a friend. He's a trusted colleague. He's someone that I can call on the phone anytime if I have a question or if I need help. And he is someone that has the highest level of integrity and ethics. And at the end of the day, the job's a lot bigger about the kids than it is about him. And so I'm sure he'll be very humbled tonight, but know that Glenn is remarkably, people just have the highest, highest respect for Glenn Maleko as a superintendent, as a friend and as a colleague. And we're just blessed to have him in our county and congratulations, Glenn.
Thank you.
So two more things. Number one is I dabble in social media myself. And at seven forty-five, an email's gonna go out to all the superintendents in the state announcing that you're the Superintendent of the Year. And as Randy mentioned, you're gonna get a lot of very, very appropriate kudos and accolades. And number two, if you would give us the option to send out the first tweet on this, that would be very. So it is now my honor to formally present the two thousand nineteen State Superintendent of the Year Award to Dr. Glenn Maleko. Glenn?
Okay. I know David's here for some pictures, but I will say a few thank yous and I just want, didn't want to, did write a few down so I don't forget anyone. You know, I can't say enough of Chris and M A S A, Randy in the county. You know, it can be a lonely job as a superintendent. And when I'm with the group, it is that supportive network. And I truly thank you for that because it is so important to be networked out there and to have that support and to help each other. And I feel that every time we're at the different conferences and the different events in Wayne County has been just fantastic. And I think together we can enhance the profession by some of the publications, some of the presentations. So we, you know, we appreciate that as well because there's learning that occurs as well that's critical. So thank you so much and to all the superintendents across the state who I see at those events and I understand what they deal with from time to time. I want to thank the Board of Education. Really, the current board members, you've been outstanding. We have a great team. Just some fantastic things are going on here as a team. And I can't say enough the high level of respect that I have for all of you. With that, we have some former trustees here as well. And I've talked to several of them. Some that actually hired me as a HR director, but at the original board. And I did reach out, but I know we have former trustee Judge Bazey's here and trustee Roxanne McDonald, who is coming back on the board. And so they were part of that initial hiring along with trustee Sholaz and trustee Guido, who I've also spoken to. And I appreciate, I've spoken to Jim Schoolmaster and Pam Adams. And I just support all of them because they've dedicated the time and you as trustees understand what they've had to deal with. So I want to thank all of them. The executive team, my wonderful, awesome team. Mason led the application, I know, but it wasn't just her, it was David, it was the team. We really do have a, I can't, this is not my award. This is our award, really. This is the team. This belongs to the team. You really can't be an effective leader or superintendent without a team. So I'm gonna say that this is, this award belongs to all of the executives. And we really do, we really feel like we have a great team. The cabinet members, I'm gonna say the staff, the union heads, we settled all the contracts. We have parents, the community outstanding. We talked about the PTA and of course, the students. Pride and joy. It really is. And we were just talking about on Friday, you know, when they want, they do. I mean, people ask me, why do you put so many pictures? Because I'll get in trouble with them because they tell me as soon as they get it, is that gonna be on Instagram? Well, I can't let them down. And that's what it's about and they want to interact with me. And so that is what we're all about, students first. I have lots of friends here, Bob, Shirley. You guys have been outstanding. And I know I have other individuals who are here in the audience supporting. I know Dr. Lazar and his family are here and many others. I know a lot of people. I couldn't go through them all. Beth and Kristen, thank you. I talked to you and you were, I'll be here. And you know, this, this award, it really belongs to Brian as well. He was my mentor. And he, I wouldn't be where I am today without him. And it was a tough year, obviously, for all of us and of course, them. And I can't imagine what they're going through, but just the highest level of respect for him. And again, this belongs to him too. So I just want everyone to know that, that I would not be here today without his influence on my career. Lastly, I do want to thank my family. My mother-in-law and father-in-law are here. My parents are here, my stepdad. And then of course, my two children, Ashley and Justin, who they do see on the social media. And my wife. And one thing, and I know you can relate, that as superintendent, it is a family sacrifice. It really is with the amount of time and hours. And they've been extremely supportive of my wife. They come to events when they need to, when they need to, but they also know the nights that I can't be there. And at the same token, we're still balancing going to different hockey and other things. But sometimes I just can't be there and they understand that. And that's where the grandparents have really, my parents and my in-laws have really helped. It really is a family effort for a superintendent. And so my wife has just been phenomenal and outstanding. And so I'm just very, I appreciate all that you do for me. Thank you for being here tonight. So I'll move on to the next thing, but I just, I'm, I'm, this Dearborn Schools is a wonderful place to be. We have a wonderful community. And again, this award belongs to the entire school community. So thank you, everyone. I'm honored and humbled, but really, this is all about the team. So thank you so much.
David's gonna line up photos, I'm sure.
We got, we need a series of pictures.
Sure, go ahead.
It's gonna take a moment, but I just.
Sure, go ahead.
All right, here we go. Ready? All right. I'll take a few of these good smiles, everybody. All right, say students first.
Next item, please.
Yeah. How many germs I'm getting from touching this?
Next item is recognition and acknowledgements. First item is commendations. And we have two students from Dearborn High, senior Alex Wiston and junior Lillian Fekki, who'll do commendations tonight.
Good evening, you two.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
Commendations to Mason Ali Bezi, Ruth Bankhead, all the human resource staff in the school building and sunshine office staff who came together to deal with the abrupt loss of our substitute teacher staffing service. Thank you to everyone's hard work and willing attitude. The district, the district within hours was able to devise and implement a plan to ensure students saw the smallest possible disruption to their education.
Commendations to Chris Kenberg, presented from login to learning at the U.S. Modal Moot, an event for leaders and innovators in online learning. Kenberg's presentation highlighted Dearborn High's, Dearborn Public Schools' work to promote powerful learning practices through technology and is example of his ongoing leadership and creative practices.
Commendations to Dawn Frizzle from the Dearborn Heights campus. On September twenty-sixth, emergency crews responded to a car accident at the school. The vehicle's driver was dead. Mr. and Ms. Frizzle stepped in to act as translator, helping paramedics get necessary information and reassuring the man. Her actions were recognized in a letter from Dearborn Heights Fire Chief David Brogan.
Congratulations to Dearborn High School's volleyball team and the success at the October thirteenth tournament at the University of Michigan Dearborn. The JV team took home a gold medal and varsity team received a silver medal at the event.
Commendations to Dearborn High's varsity boys soccer team and Coach Fire. The team clinched the M H S A A District Eight championship with a win over U of D Jesuit.
Commendations to Fortson High School's varsity football team and the coaches. The Tractors defeated Cass Tech forty-one to fourteen to win the district championship.
Commendations to all the elementary and middle school physical education teachers. Dearborn Track Club, the city of Dearborn and Student Services Director Abma Shore for her successful Supriyana run on October fifteenth. Special thanks to Marion Maisiar of Garrett Park Elementary and Scott Hummel and Student Services for the work on this event. Thank you to all the parents and students who have disappeared.
Commendations to the Becker teachers and administrators who hosted the Westwood School District Superintendent and staff on October twenty-eighth. Thank you to all those involved for taking the time to show how the Becker School community supports the learning of every student. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
National Blue Ribbon STEM Award. Dr. Maleko?
So I'm gonna call up Dr. Green and her team. We had a great week last week in Washington. Second ever in the history of Dearborn Schools, Blue Ribbon School. They only give out thirteen across the state. We did go to Washington to receive that and it was a great couple of days we spent there, receiving the recognition, getting some learning and then seeing some sights in Washington. It was a pleasure to go with Dr. Green and her team last week. We're very proud of them.
Thank you, Dr. Maleko. Hello, President Mead, trustees and Superintendent Maleko. Myself and my team members, Mr. Baydoun and Ms. Frizzle, along with Superintendent Maleko, have just returned from the prestigious National Blue Ribbon Schools Program Ceremony in Washington, DC. The day leading to the culminatory award ceremony was very exciting. It was a pleasure to network with other educators, teachers, principals, superintendents and other district leaders who were being recognized at the highest level for academic excellence. In the short time that the STEM Middle School has been in existence, it was evident it would be a quick study in being a high performing school. With that being said, we are extremely proud of our students, parents and our entire Dearborn learning community. Many of our students and parents are here tonight. Our dedicated and hardworking staff is to be commended on the high standards they set for themselves and also for our students. We as a staff are truly appreciative of the support of the school board that allows us to provide this unique, challenging and rigorous learning experience to the students and families we serve. The National Blue Ribbon School Award is just the beginning and a very powerful one. Schools that receive this award report that many positives are gained as a result of being designated as a National Blue Ribbon School. I expect that we will continue to build upon this momentum as we move forward. At this time, I would like you to know we are thoroughly excited and still on a little bit of a high, just returning back. The ceremony itself, I don't know if you had a chance to see the video. You see Dr. Maleko taking a dance across the stage, myself and also my team. So we had some fun as well.
They told me when I got back, I needed to take some lessons though, so I don't know if it went over.
It was fun. But I'd like to introduce Assistant Principal Osama Baydoun, who'll speak briefly and then followed by Ms. Jennifer Frizzle, our lead teacher. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Thank you all, board trustees, Dr. Maleko. I gotta tell you, the most exciting part of that event was having you catch that disco fever and go back some of those moves. I wondered, can we just play that song again? But truly it was an honor, distinct honor for, to have the overwhelming support for, to do the things that we naturally do over there. And as soon as you walk into STEM Middle School, you notice that there's a culture of excellence. Our students, one of the things that I pride myself on is that they have this grit and resilience and that no matter how many times they fail, they continue to go back to the problem. Whether they're programming, coding their robot to do some maneuvers or they're building these paper planes to, you know, test the aeronautical engineering parts of how fast and how far they can go. Or building boats out of cardboard boxes. So far, it's just been a brilliant experience, outstanding. And we are very thankful, very, very proud of our parents, our students who are here tonight. Thank you guys for showing up. And next, I just want to say, I appreciate all the teachers, the hardworking teachers that we have at STEM and our team leader here, Ms. Frizzle, who's gonna go through the PowerPoint with you. Thank you so much again.
Thank you.
Good evening. I can't say any more than they've already said. It was a very exciting experience. I was asked to kind of just give a brief overview of what STEM is and how we got to this prestigious award. We were recognized as an academic excellence school, outstanding in the state. We are the only middle school this year in the state of Michigan to receive the National Blue Ribbon Award. And as many people were telling us when we were there, you know, it's tough in middle school to keep them motivated and keep them engaged. And so that was recognized many times by people that I met as we proudly accepted the award, not only for ourselves, but on behalf of the entire districts and the STEM family. Our staff had parent teacher conferences tonight, so I'm sorry. They weren't all able to come, but we, they are here in spirit. We're a small staff of ten and they're all pictured here. We offer three electives and the core classes. We've been recognized several times throughout the past five years. This year, we were ranked number one in the state of Michigan for the top performing ELA scores on the M-Step. We were also ranked number twelve in the state by Detroit Free Press in January of two thousand seventeen. We are also ranked ninety-ninth percentile in the state of Michigan as of two thousand seventeen and number five by the Mackinac Center in two thousand eighteen. So some great things are happening here at STEM. As we enter our fifth year, we're now at sixth, seventh and eighth grade. And we, this year, accepted our students based upon invitation and application with our average N W E A winter scores in math being two hundred and forty and two twenty-seven in reading. So we have some high performing students coming our way. But we do mirror the district with free and reduced lunch. coming our way. But we do mirror the district with free and reduced lunch. We pretty much are the same as many of the other schools across the district. Our NWEA results, as you can see, are quite high. And when you compare us to the state for M-Step and ELA, we are knocking it out of the park, including math with our NWEA and compared to the state. It's not easy, though, to keep highly, highly intelligent students motivated, let me just tell you, because they do want to sometimes give up when they don't get the right answer, and they want the right answer. And so, telling them to think about it or go back and try again, sometimes is a little disheartening to them. Our PSAT results came in, and I'm proud to say that one hundred percent of our students last year met the requirements in language arts, and ninety-eight percent of our students met the requirements in math. The nation was only at sixty-seven percent in reading and fifty-two percent. And that is the first timed test our eighth graders would ever have taken. And so, they did very, very well on that high-pressure test. We offer just as many after-school activities as the other middle schools, with the exception of sports. Our kids go back to their home middle schools for that. But with a staff of ten, you can see that we are quite busy offering as many opportunities as we physically can do in a work week with only ten members to take on all of these activities. And I'm very proud of our staff for taking on two, three, sometimes four clubs for our students to have options. Our biggest goal, as Mr. Baydoun and Dr. Green were saying, is that we focus in on the twenty-first century thinking skills of communication, collaboration, and critical thinking. And we do that through our strategy of being a project-based learning school across all, including myself in language arts, in social studies, giving students real-world problems to figure out using the skills and the standards that everybody else is using, just in a different way. And they do that through tons of group work. Currently, the entire school is working on solving the power grid issue in areas of natural disasters. So, thinking a hundred years in the future, how can we come up with a power grid system to withstand a hurricane, a tornado, a flood, a tsunami, or whatever, so that things like Puerto Rico, where they are out of power for six months, don't happen in the future? They're doing that through research and engineering. We've had DTE come in and talk with our students, and they were extremely impressed with how much they knew about the current power grid system to ask intelligent questions. The advantages of STEM is that we're small, and our staff can give personal attention to students who sometimes in a larger classroom might be left to the side as more struggling students got that attention. And we have a diversity across, and we partner with our high school, as we now start at the high school time on the Dearborn Heights campus. We have hands-on instructional practices and constant collaboration, and as you can see, it's really working for us, as we celebrate not only with a great lunch in Washington, DC, and some wonderful music, but our second National Blue Ribbon Award for Dearborn Public Schools, and we thank you for the opportunity to have STEM Middle School.
Will allow the students to come up and anyone from STEM for the picture. We're going to take a picture here and congratulate. And I want to say, this really, you know, when one school suffers or hurts, the district does. When one school is successful, the district feels it, and we're a family together. And STEM really is, because STEM students are coming from all over the district. So, again, this is a positive for STEM, the families, the community, the students, and Dearborn Schools.
Trustee Petlicoff?
I would just like to say that when I started on the board in two thousand and eight, we had huge budget cuts, and programs that rewarded students that were excelling were kind of lost. And we heard a lot of parents who worried about that, and that we were only addressing the students that were struggling. So, it is wonderful to see the success we're having here with these types of programs and the resurgence of them again, and, and our investment in them.
Thank you. We are so proud that you received this award and representing us so well in Washington, DC. Thank you.